So 6.9 consideration of presentation giving an update on the invasive Mediterranean oak bore in Lake County. And we have. Terry, I'll let you have the floor. Introduce it and then we'll go.
Thank you, yes. Good afternoon, Board again. Terry Logston, Chief Climate Resiliency Officer and Tribal Liaison. And so today I have with me representatives from the Clear Lake Environmental Research Center, from CAL FIRE and online from the University of California Cooperative Extension, I hope he's still on, Dr. Mike Jones. And they're here today to give an update on the status of the Mediterranean oak bore and how it's devastating Lake County's oak trees. Sorry to say that. There is a cover memo. While UC has found that it can attack at least 12 species of oaks, it primarily infests two species here in the white oak series here in Lake County, valley and blue oak. And the recurring and ongoing drought can continue to stress trees, particularly older trees. So our large and oldest valley oaks are the most susceptible. And so I understand the lateness of the day, so I'm not going to reread this whole memo. And whom shall I turn it over to first? Julia or Curtis? I think the turn on the make sure the microphone's on.
I am Curtis Hewing with CAL FIRE. I'm an entomologist. We've been doing most of the research, Michael Jones and I, with UC INR. I don't have a lot of new information, other than that the rate of spread in California has really been picking up, probably due to the increase in source material. We've now up to at least nine to 10 counties and probably more. The dispersal is still the same as it's been. It's in the spring. We have determined what triggers the dispersal. It is the temperature of the sapwood when it reaches about 65 degrees, which requires temperatures in the high 60s for three or four days. One day of 80 degrees can trigger it. And we had dispersal this year as early as February into early June across the state. So it's very unpredictable. We are working on getting additional funding for initiatives to explore disposal of infested wood to try to hope, try to slow the spread. And Michael Jones and I also have a series of about 300 trees in six different plots that we're tracking. This year's the first year we have seen a number of trees that appear to be recovering. So that's encouraging. I don't have the firm data. We were just surveying them yesterday, but at least that's encouraging. We're also right in the middle of working with cooperators on, two different cooperators at least, Mike can maybe clarify this, there might be a third, to run trials for treatments of the trees, chemical treatments. So it's with the companies that do the work. They'll pay for almost all of it. And we also are exploring additional funding through Prop IV and other sources for other research. And we were going to do additional surveys this year, but the money came through a little late. That was for 5% of the invasive shot hole bore money, but we will be doing surveys in the spring of '26 with that funding. And I'm also here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Was there any?
Are you able to show your video from here or would you like me to show it from here?
It might be easier to show it from here. We have, is the mic on? No idea.
Yes.
Oh, we have a short video. We have a short video that pretty much is going to act as a visual aid for some of the Mediterranean oak bore that we've been seeing around Lake County. A lot of the symptoms that we've noticed during this time is not just a top-down die-off, but many-
I don't believe it is being shared. Is it being shared on Zoom? If you can share it and then start it over.
There it goes.
Sorry.
There it is.
Looks like we got it.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt.
What we've noticed is that there have been a lot of multiple entry points, as well as it doesn't just die from the top down. We've seen large chunks of lower branches dying off. Still those, what we can see right here at the lower levels, as well as just entire tree is just turning brown at once. We've also noticed trees of multiple age classes and sizes with large mature oaks dying, as well as smaller, thin, younger trees.
Those are tunnel?
Yep, these are some of the galleries that we noticed, the black fungus that's being spread by Mediterranean oak bore during this tunneling. Thank you for showing the video. I'm Julia Clickert. I'm a biologist with Clear Lake Environmental Research Center. Do we have the additional photos as well?
Which one was it first?
Let's go one.
Open it up first.
Sorry. Thank you.
Hey, you were there at the bottom. At the bottom.
Where?
Yeah.
Seven?
You gotta do it again.
Which one?
I think you gotta open it back up because it wasn't shared or it wasn't open before. You gotta kind of reset.
Mine is an exit. Yeah, I'm online if you'd like me to share.
Hit cancel on Zoom. Hit the X. Yeah. And then hit share again. It'll re-view all the screens that you now have open.
Perfect. So this is the map that shows on our dashboard. You can access this at theclerk.org for our Mediterranean oak bore surveying project. It's actually color-coded, so we can see that the cooler blue dots are ones from last year, while those angrier-looking red dots are the current surveys from this year. There's been a large increase. This could be because of Mediterranean oak bore awareness with more people reporting, as well as we notice a high concentration within residential areas and along main roads. I think that is, it could be because of transport of woody materials. However, there's also public access to trees, how easily someone could be able to see and then report said trees.
Should I go to the other one?
Uh, this was the second one, so it's fine. Oh my goodness.
That's the one you looked at.
No worries, it's fine. For the point data that we have, it is, the data is accessible for our partners, and we're hoping to also be able to spread awareness for filling out the surveys again on the website, on our projects, on theclerk.org. There's also an upcoming training that is being planned for early December for contractors to be able to know how to identify Mediterranean oak bore symptoms, as well as be able to handle the woody material afterwards.
And when is that?
It's early December. I think they're thinking around the week of the 8th.
Sometimes the week of the 8th.
Yeah, it would be in evening time.
And then I just want to share one other thing.
If Dr. Jones is online, can you promote him to panelist?
I did.
Okay. And Dr. Jones, do you have? I see him.
Good afternoon. Yeah, Michael Jones, UC Cooperative Extension, Forest Advisor for Lake County. I don't have much to add what Curtis and Clerk have already said. In addition to the Arbrist or Tree Care Professional Workshop that we'll be hosting in December, I'm working with Middletown Ranch Rea to host a community meeting sometime in late November that will be more about general information on mob. So yeah, looking forward to working with you all and keeping kind of the you appraised, oh, and we're also developing a work group. So hopefully we can coordinate and distribute the information as we do research and kind of build more capacity around detection, limitation, and understanding this pest. So we'll be sure to keep you guys appraised of new findings and as conditions change. So thank you.
Thank you.
I had one bit of information I was trying to share, and apparently I cannot share it from here, but thanks to the Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians, their EPA department, she, Sarah Ryan, has set up a project on iNaturalist. And that allows anyone in the county who has an iNaturalist account, if you take a picture of an oak tree, no matter what kind it is, and identify it, it will add it to there. The map I was going to show was, it confirms exactly what Clerk is showing, is high concentrations in the lakeport area, high concentrations in riparian corridors. So it seems to be, it's all along the lakeshore, all along creeks, which one of the major concerns is as these oak trees die, they're going to become hitch barriers. And so, any other?
Please.
Of course. In the end goal for both the survey data, but largely what we're also collecting is that we want to be able to, be able to present it as sort of an overwhelming cause, to be able to get grant funding or similar funding to take down the trees and help mitigate mob.
And one of the things that Tracy mentioned to me quite a while ago was that it initially was thought to be elevation limited to about 2,500 feet, but you have found some at or above that.
Ours was at 2,300 that we were trapping at.
And did you have positive results there?
I've seen some wood that is definitely has the galleries there.
Okay. Yeah, I suspected it might be higher. In Europe, which is where they are native, the highest was 2,000 feet, but I found it at 2,000 feet without trying very hard on Mount St. Helena. So I suspected that it probably was going higher. So in cooperation with Julie, we initiated trapping above 2,000 feet.
Well, it sounds like from the last time that we had a presentation that there's a little more hope, thank you, to find out if they're recovering. Last I heard this summer, there was no chance of recovery. There were no researchers. There really wasn't much funding for any research to go on. So I wanted to let your board know because your constituents, you're going to hear, particularly from the city of Clear Lake, which has an ordinance where you have to go and prove before you can take an oak tree down. And we've had, you know, several sightings in the city of Clear Lake, and the expense of taking the tree down, plus then, you know, that permit might be something the city wants to look at. But the county of Lake, we don't have such an ordinance, but there's a considerable amount of dead and dying oak trees.
All right. Go ahead Supervisor Owen.
The treatment you had mentioned, were those trees that you're seeing the recovery in, were there, was there a specific treatment that we did?
I don't want to make it seem too hopeful. They're just a small percentage, not treated, but just we've had mild weather for a good three or more years now. And it seems like some of these really stressed-out trees have probably put on additional sapwood. And so they're able to move more water, able to photosynthesize more efficiently, and they may be just kind of boosting their resistance.
Okay. And is there any type of treatment that we've found or looked into?
There has been, up to this point, there has not been any scientific studies focusing on standard treatments, which usually include injection of an insecticide and a fungicide. Because what is really killing the tree is the fungus that you see in those, that black fungus that you see in those galleries, but that actually spreads throughout the sapwood and clogs the tree. That's what makes it turn brown suddenly. So we have three different groups that will be, hopefully next year, we have found at least two study sites. We're actively this month and next month, working on finding additional study sites. And these companies that either market or inject the, market the chemicals or are more focused on injecting trees will be studying different combinations of the chemicals to see if they're effective.
So it wouldn't be anything topical? It would be injected?
There is one that might slow them down that is topical. There was some work on that in the past year. It looks like it doesn't really kill the beetles, but it slows them down.
Okay.
But we don't have any results yet. It'll probably take a number of years to go.
And the spread of it, is that contributed to birds or?
Firewood primarily.
Firewood primarily. I know we had mentioned, you guys had mentioned that before when that came before us, but I wasn't sure about the, you know, if the birds were also somehow?
No, I don't think birds can spread it. They can fly, but honestly, I think that is a minor, more local kind of spread effect. The big jumps we're seeing into Amador County, El Dorado County, possibly into Sutter County, these are all big jumps of 50 miles or more. So that's almost certainly the movement of wood. The beetles that jumped into Sacramento almost certainly came from Napa County, or maybe Lake, but from this area. So it's mostly firewood that they're being spread in.
Okay.
Or other cut wood, green waste.
Thank you.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, something that popped when I was reading through the memo in preparation for the meeting was the paragraph that says, "As of 2024, aerial surveys conducted by United States Forest Service have determined that there were over 69,000 acres of dead conifers," which is not oak trees. So there's 69,000 acres of the oak trees that we've been seeing with the boring beetle or the other, what is it, the bark beetle that's infesting those trees? And then there's potentially 100,000 acres of oaks being affected by the Mediterranean oak bore. So that's a potential of 169,000 acres, or do they overlap a whole lot?
Good question.
Their favorite tree is the valley oak, which is, I would almost think it, you could just think of it as an alluvial oak. It's only going to grow naturally in sort of these sandy deposits. Soon as you get into any rocky soils, the only host you'll find there would be blue oak, which appears at this point to be not as favored. So that's why you're seeing most of the damage along the creeks and around the shoreline. So certainly in the valley, if they start attacking the blue oaks, that really opens up a lot of acreage to potential attack. Valley oaks, I don't know what the actual potential is. That is one of the things we're writing a grant for. There's someone at UC Davis that writes risk maps, that looks at where the hosts are, where the weather is, that favors them, where the elevation is. That's one of the reasons I wanted to work with Julie at this point, before we applied for that grant, to determine where the potential spread is. But it's basically, almost anywhere there's valley oaks, I would be, assume that's a place where they could spread to.
Yeah, we've been seeing the movement as we have these discussions and that very large oak tree on the southwestern edge of Austin Park, that was more than just mob, I think, because there was a pretty large hole in the middle of the entire trunk. But it's taking down some pretty large and important trees in our area, but we also don't want them to fall and damage things. And so we have to figure out something.
With the, all the stresses from, you know, drought, and then especially heat waves on top of the drought, which is really what knocks out the sapwood in these trees, there are many things that will, in that situation, attack the tree. There's other fungi that are known as endophytes. They're basically things that are always in the tree. When the tree dies, they kind of go in and decay it. Those can be activated and become more aggressive. Other beetles can attack under certain circumstances. If you have root disease in the trees this year, especially not necessarily here as much, but in colder, wetter areas, we're seeing root disease and then the native ambrosia beetles attacking the trees a lot. So there's a lot of factors affecting these trees right now.
So water your oaks? No, sorry.
That's another experiment we're working on. Just last week, we found a potential site to do that next year. I wanted to do it this year. It was a nice, cool summer. The trees were not stressed out, so we couldn't really do the experiment.
I was always told not to do that because they can fall.
You have to be very, very careful. You're more likely to kill the tree than help it if you start watering it.
Yeah.
Supervisor Owen?
Oh, one more thing. When a lot of these trees and stuff are taken to a site and ground up, chipped basically, and then people are going in and getting it, picking up the chips for, whether it be for soil for planting, or whether it be for the, to, you know, improve your soils, it, you know, for a project, are, can that also spread the oak mite?
It could. The more coarse it's chipped, the more will survive. At a three inch, you will expect a certain percentage to survive, which is standard. If you buried it, then that is a standard way to deal with infested wood. If you can bury it, say at eight inches, almost guaranteed none are going to escape. If you're sticking it on the surface, yes. If it's the wrong time of year, when there's a lot of adult beetles in there, they can, a certain percentage.
Can infest your property.
Up to 5%, maybe would be a guess, but that's another thing we need to look into.
Okay.
But we're looking at similar symptoms with closely related beetles. That's what they've found.
Thank you.
And one of the statistics, I don't remember if it was Tracy or whom, but each, particularly a large valley oak, can have over a million females in the tree, and they do not need males to reproduce. And so when you get one valley oak in the middle of a valley infected, I mean, it just, it goes exponentially around it.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and open this up to the public if anybody wants to comment on this, this presentation. All right.
Hello, my name is Dimitri Navawa. I am the EPA technician for the Scots Valley Band of Pomo Indians. I am also a tribal member, and I am here to address the Mediterranean oak bore and, sorry. On behalf of the tribe, I would like to express deep concern for this issue, and we hope that you guys find, work towards finding a solution, and we support that. And I just wanted to say that the oaks are very important to us. It is one of our cultural foods. We've been eating it for thousands of years. There's some people that use it for ceremony to fast their system up. And the oaks, like apartment complex for the environment, or sorry, it's an apartment complex for the wildlife out there. And it's very important to us that our regalias and our bird, like our birds, sorry. Our, our birds rely on that tree to live, and we honor the birds by making a regalia out of it. And it is a keystone species, so it is like just the first part that kind of keeps the ecosystem together, and it could be a slippery slope. And I just want to, just want to protect the oaks and hopefully someday that my grandchildren can eat acorn mush. And I believe that's all. And if we take care of the land, it'll take care of us. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dimitri.
Hi, Sarah Ryan, Environmental Director, Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians. I was curious about the active ingredient of the pesticides that are being used. It sounds like maybe there's some trials, but is it amitocloprid? Because I was talking to a local arborist who says he drenches his tree roots with that. So curious about that, because I know there've been studies with sudden oak death and pesticides used to, to deal with those issues that I know the Kishia tribe was looking at if there were going to be any impacts to the acorns, because just as the last speaker said, it's a source of food for the people as well as the environment.
Mike, are you still there? I know there was some discussion of also looking at a drenched treatment and exactly which chemicals they were going to be testing.
Yeah, Michael Jones, UC Cooperative Extension. We haven't really come up with the, all the research trials we're going to do yet. I don't think amitocloprid will be one of those. We're primarily going to focus on known chemicals like emectin benzoate, which is an insecticide, phosphorus, phosphor, not phosphor, phosphorus acid, which is a fungicide, and then some other products that are kind of targeted for ambrosia beetles and their complexes. And those are chemicals that will be new for potentially treating mob, but we're still developing a lot of the potential chemicals we'll be thinking about testing in this space. A lot of these products have been tested for how well they translocate to different tissues in trees. And we certainly will add an element, I think we've pretty much shown, or research has shown that it's, that the, they're not very likely to move into the nuts and the seeds, but we'll certainly will add an element of monitoring to determine if there is potential impact to the acorns. That certainly is an important thing to consider. But typically, these chemicals mobilize within the woody tissue, and they don't spread too much into some of the other parts of the tree. But we're certainly going to be studying that as well when we do these trials.
Thank you. Yes, it sounds like a research authorization permit is probably going to, they'll probably go after that with the Department of Pesticide Regulation, because if you're using a chemical on a new crop or product, you have to have, there's a research component to it. So that's probably something that they'll have to go after. So yes, we definitely want to make sure that it doesn't go into the food source. That's so important to the tribes. And so we'd like to stay involved in the situation. The other thing I want to point out, or two other things I want to point out, one is that it's, it's not a surprise that the trees are, you know, that the landscape is having so many problems because of so many, you know, decades and, you know, many, many years of not a lot of burning, and the tribal cultural burning that has been a part of insect control. It's now coming back, and as it's coming back, and we also see a lot of fuels management going on throughout the county, we need to make sure that people are, anybody engaged in that is disinfecting their equipment. I'm glad there's going to be a training in December, and I really hope that that is incorporated into any management, is that they're not spreading it. Because it's very interesting that right after all these big fires, you know, we're having this, this problem with the, with Mediterranean oak bore. So yeah, just those components. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. And just a quick question. With the, like mentioned, you know, the burn, the fire and the burning, would that affect the oak bore? It would, obviously would kill them, but would it, could they still multiply after that, or? If that makes sense? Because what used to take place is, when they would do the cultural burn, it would burn the underpart of the oak, and that way it would keep it, you know, that's why you had that plume going up of oak trees back in, back in that timeframe, so.
So yes, Michael and I established two pairs of plots in Napa and Sonoma in the footprint of the blast fire. And that's, we established the plots in 2021, and we are monitoring that. There was an increase in activity immediately after the fire. So it was from a low intensity to a moderate intensity. There was no point in establishing plots in high intensity, because those trees were burned. The more damage to the bark, the more activity we saw in the first year or two. Last year, I did not see maybe just a couple trees, so it's falling off in the trees that are healing. But it looks like it does not increase the rate of attack very much at all, which is actually different. There's a related species in Europe, which is well documented, to attack the trees more after fires, but we are not seeing that. And especially if it's low intensity, we didn't really see any increase in attack. It's more in the moderate, where you're getting, you know, a third of the cambium burned away, up a few feet to five or six feet at the base of the tree, then all sorts of things go in there, probably a dozen or more insects and fungi and things get in there, because it's a huge wound.
Thank you.
I had spoken with the EPA Department of the La Jolla Band of Lucentia Indians. They are doing a project utilizing cultural burning around oak trees for the shot hole bore. Now, I know it's not the same, and they're still in their preliminary, but there are conversations, particularly among Southern California tribes. And here, you know, I've spoken with all the tribes. As soon as there's a way to do some of that type of testing, I know that our EPA departments would want to.
Thank you. Maria, please come up.
Hi, Maria Khan. Sarah touched on something that I was thinking about with regards to cross-contamination from chainsaws and from equipment, and whether we would have any influence on PG&E when they do their tree trimming and stuff, to have them implement or make sure that they clean those blades on those chainsaws before they, because they-
Then all sorts of things go in there, probably a dozen or more insects and fungi and things get in there, because it's a huge wound.
Thank you.
I had spoken with the EPA Department of the La Jolla Band of Lucentia Indians. They are doing a project utilizing cultural burning around oak trees for the shot hole bore. Now, I know it's not the same, and they're still in their preliminary, but there are conversations, particularly among Southern California tribes. And here, you know, I've spoken with all the tribes. As soon as there's a way to do some of that type of testing, I know that our EPA departments would want to.
Thank you. Maria, please come up.
Hi, Maria Khan. Sarah touched on something that I was thinking about with regards to cross contamination from chainsaws and from equipment, and whether we would have any influence on PG&E when they do their tree trimming and stuff to have them implement or make sure that they clean those blades on those, uh, chainsaws before they, because they continually go all over the place. And, um, my neighbor brought it up, because they were trimming in our neighborhood, and we're just going from one to the other and didn't seem to have any, any sort of a mechanism to keep cross contamination from happening. So I just, uh, wanted to throw that out there. So thank you.
Maria? Any other comments? Come on up. Jess.
Good afternoon, Board. Margot Cambara. Just an observation. Well, first, thank you for the presentation and the partially good news, but gosh, it is alarming how quickly, um, mob is spreading. And that brings, um, my, me to this comment is that it's spreading so aggressively. And since the, the oaks are so important to, um, our community and, and our tribal communities, we should do everything we can to protect the trees and everything we can to keep healthy trees healthy. There is something that is within our power that we can do, and that is to instruct community development in the Planning Division to be more mindful when reviewing permits that call for the removal of trees, especially healthy oak trees, for discretionary purposes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the one thing I'd like to add in on that topic is if you do any kind of development that causes inundation in the spring around the bases of the trees, that is the one thing we are seeing in our plots that does seem to increase the rate of, um, decline and the rate of attack. And this is actually, um, within the literature, this is well-known. Ambrosia beetles in, are much more likely to kill trees that are overwatered and inundated than in the literature ones that are affected by the drought and the heat. But I believe that the valley oak, because they are basically growing almost within feet of the water table, that they are actually affected by drought as well. But the, um, the worst spot is at the, um, in between the Vine Trail and the Kalistoga Water Treatment Plant, where there's disturbance on one side from the trail, disturbance on the other side for the berms for the water treatment plant, and that has created sort of a ditch that floods in the spring, and that is the one place where we're seeing the most disturbance. So I'd be very careful in the hydrology around development in valley oaks especially.
All right. Uh, come on up.
I didn't plan to speak on this, but, um, Tom Lysick. I grew up in Thousand Oaks, California. And, uh, back in the sixties, when I was just a kid, we actually had an existential crisis. All of our oaks were going, were disappearing, mostly from development. And it was a running joke, whether we could even rightfully call ourselves Thousand Oaks anymore. It'd be, you know, a handful of oaks, California. But it was a, um, it was an existential concern, and through education and communication, we got to a point as a community where the oaks became super, super important to our identity, to how we define ourselves. Uh, we started naming schools after oak trees, Los Ritos, uh, Valley Oaks. Uh, we, it, it became part of our, of our identity. And because of that, uh, the attention and the awareness of the plight of the oaks came to the forefront. And we were, if not the first, one of the first municipalities to pass no coordinates. There never was, there wasn't an EPA back then. There was nothing like that. And it's still one of the gold standards for a no coordinates. I bring that forward today, because if I was to have a conversation about a hitch 10 years ago, I wouldn't even know what a hitch was. No clue, none whatsoever. But it's part of our identity as a county. And now everybody knows about the hitch, and everybody wants to take care of it. Everybody realizes that it's part of who we are. Mr. Montez, I don't know if he, he brought up, he's part of, he and the lake are one. And I think that extends beyond, you know, where you're from. If you live in this county long enough, you realize that that's the case. If we bring this issue forward, I hear more about the oak bore beetle in county meetings. I don't hear about it in the community. I think if we start getting additional public awareness to the same level, and I think it deserves the same level as what we do for the hitch, that will go a long way to making people more, um, willing to, um, you know, as, as Ms. Cambara's mentioned, discretionary permits and cutting down oaks, being more attentive to that and being more protective and realizing that, um, there is another way forward that brings success. And, and by the way, the happy ending to Thousand Oaks is after they passed the ordinance. It was quite controversial. It's one of the most thriving, well-planned cities in the country. Constantly issues rewards. It's not a development versus oaks. It was development and oaks, and you have the most creative areas of design and, and development in, in, in the state. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Julia Carrera, member of the State Blue and Valley Oak Working Group. I would like to, uh, speak to citizen science tree, citizen scientists in regards to this mob epidemic in Lake County. Just as we did with the hitch, it would nice, it would be nice to see a training for our community members to identify mob and how to go about, um, reporting the, um, uh, infestation. And I also want to make a comment to the Risk Reduction Authority members on the board. This is an important component to that, uh, power of joint power, and I really hope you start considering it in the Risk Reduction Authority meetings. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any on Zoom?
Hello again. This is Kate Schmidt-Hopper. This is such an important issue, the mob issue. I, um, am grateful for Clerk for taking such a strong lead on this. I think it's, uh, very important for, um, our electeds and our department heads to consider what processes they can come up with going forward to supply some financial support for people who have, uh, small, uh, stand, small property but with stands of oak trees on them. I personally live on a blue oak savanna. I'm grateful that I have this land to steward. I have my house here for the last 30 years, and I am very concerned about my oak trees. And, um, I have, I have some funds. I know some people have no funds to selectively remove trees that look distressed or dead or dying so as to preserve the trees that remain healthy. So I think it, I would hope that the county or some of the department heads, I know that Clerk moving forward, I'm sure, is looking for grant money to be able to not only do the research that they're doing, but to do mitigation. And I think that, um, as proactive as we can be as a county towards allowing the public to resource funds to assist with mitigation will be, um, a huge step forward in protecting our oak trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Guest, if you can unmute. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Angela Emerald. Um, I, I brought this up a, a couple of years ago when we were talking about the mob, and I wanted to know if any progress had been made on, um, potentially doing an outreach program to encourage visitors to not transport wood, similar to on Highway 20 out east of Spring Valley. There's the Quagga Muscle Information Sign and something along those lines that, um, kind of piggybacks off of the Don'tMoveFireWood.org website. Also, if there's been any progress as far as working together with BLM when they issue the woodcutting permits for them to, I don't know if they're doing it yet, to hand out, um, provide a handout to people with their woodcutting permit so that they know how to identify it and don't move that wood out of BLM land. As someone that lives, borders BLM on the very outskirts, on the edges of the county, um, we are starting to see mob, uh, damage out here. So it is, it's not just near high, high-traffic roads. It's not populated areas. It is moving out into the more remote areas. And so maybe more outreach to visitors that don't come to our county often. Don't understand the severity of it and how to control it might be beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle, if you can unmute.
Oh, thank you. Um, yeah, just, I think it's really important, you know, to, this is why, you know, we advocate for so much of the land stewardship. Making sure, I think some of the things that, that there should be is making, looking at a cultural burn plan so that, uh, cultural burns can take place to reduce some of the foliage and, and dead limbs that are there, especially during and after the, um, after the gathering season, um, looking at how we can burn. I do agree, I think there needs to be more public, um, kind of a campaign to help, um, educate the community on, on what to identify, on what their, what, uh, uh, infested oak might look like and how they can do it. Of the, um, you know, local, um, not keeping the wood locally and not taking it out or bringing in new woods, I think is an important thing. And I, I do, uh, think that taking the same approach that we do with the hitch is, I think, is really important, um, in, in really raising more awareness locally. But I also want to address the, um, possible use of pesticides. I do agree, as, as many of our families continue to still practice gathering and consumption of acorn, finding a mechanism online to make sure that we know where these, um, group of oaks have been, um, you know, sprayed, possibly treated with pesticides, or, um, in, in knowing what those pesticides are, so that we can do our own informed research on, on, um, you know, being cautious of, of gathering in certain areas. So just like you guys developed the map identifying the infected trees, I would love to see a map that, um, shows areas that are being treated and, um, so that the community can be informed on when they do and go and gather, potentially areas to avoid and which oak trees they can gather from. And then just lastly, I think this is so critical, why as community we, a lot of the trainings that we do, um, within the nonprofit sector here at KNWI, is we talk about, um, if you own property that has oaks, um, and they're not being tended to, you know, outreach to local tribes, if there are people that are still gathering, because when we're gathering, we're pruning the trees, we're, you know, getting the foliage cleared out, um, and making the soil, um, healthy. Because the most vulnerable oaks are the ones that are unhealthy. And so trees that are just sitting there, not being used tradition, in a traditional way of, you know, gathering for consumption, are going to be the ones that get the sickest. So this is why it's so important, traditional ecological knowledge and traditional gathering practices are, it's not just like going into the grocery store. We're actually caring for these trees and caring for the environment while we're getting sustenance for consumption. So it goes back to the importance of, of traditional gathering, not just for our consumption, but we are a part of the, uh, important part of the ecology of this environment. And so trees that are just sitting there are going to get sick, and this is what's going to exacerbate the, this issue. So, um, I just wanted to share that, and I appreciate, most importantly, um, I'm concerned about those pesticides and, um, needing to know where that's going to be when we're gathering. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other? All right, with that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Owen.
Um, as far as the concern about the, identifying the trees that have been treated, that could be done by paint, perhaps on those actual trees. Would that work like some type of paint on, or some way to identify those trees at the base?
Um, okay, so let me just start from a more basic sort of, um, background. In general, pesticide use and injection is extremely expensive, so it would never be used on a landscape scale. We're usually talking about large oaks, overhanging structures or in, um, very kind of high-use areas. So I share their concern very much with overuse of the pesticides. And in general, they, their, their effectiveness is somewhat limited. So I don't anticipate that you're going to have thousands of treated trees, because you have to do it every year, every two years. It's very expensive, thousands of dollars a year usually. Um, I don't think paint would really be good enough, because that's not going to really tell people what it is. When you treat something with a pesticide like that, if you really want to know, you're going to have to put a sign on the tree that explains what it is and the dangers.
Just as a random follow-up, are these treated trees on private property or public property?
I personally have never treated a tree. Um, the only ones I've seen have all been in people's backyards or front yards.
So at least the property owner would be aware that their tree has been treated.
Right, because they're the ones that are paying the thousands of dollars a year to treat a tree.
I would suspect if somebody is on someone's private property, uh, doing any kind of gathering, that they would have interactions with that property owner, and hopefully that interaction's happening, um, with full disclosure of what's being done on their property.
Right. But, um, and, and I don't know what the rules are for post-application in a public space, whether or not it would be a standard, kind of, you have to mark it and say, you know, it's a one or two-week quarantine or whatever it would be. I am not familiar with those rules.
Thank you.
Maybe Mike is, but I'm not.
And I appreciate the comment about PG&E and their tools, but I can't even get them to put two flaggers to legally actually block a road to cut trees. So asking them to do something to their tools and their implements, I, I like the idea, but I'm, I'm losing hope that they can follow the rules at this moment in time.
And quite often.
That is another area that needs to be researched.
Yes.
How much they spread, because I know with invasive shot hole bore, that fungus doesn't really spread on tools. It seems to somehow need the beetle to inject it into the tree. They're fairly closely related, so there's some chance that, I would say there's some chance you certainly could spread it with the tools, but it may be very low percentage, but we don't know.
Okay. And then quite often PG&E also uses contractors, so that would have to extend to contractors, because they use a number of contractors.
Yeah, I know when we first discovered it in Napa, we were trying to work with them quite a bit, and they had over a hundred contractors just in Napa Valley. And that was quite a stumbling block.
Yes.
And how many contractors are in Lake County?
There's only a few, actually, um, tree contractors that are working for PG&E in Lake County. But I will say that we have been working closely with PG&E on this issue. And, um, anytime those contractors, I live in kind of the big purple blob that you saw on that heat map up there. And anytime I see contractors in my neighborhood, I have flyers, I'm communicating with them. They're, I'm telling them, call your supervisor. I want to make sure you guys all understand what you're dealing with. They know about this, um, issue, and PG&E has been very, um, appreciative of any feedback that they're getting about any spread that's happening along their corridors. I don't know that we have a significant, um, protocol that can be used to minimize the spread, um, from their tools, but they're aware of it. You know, we don't have great answers right now, but we're, we're all communicating and talking about it. Uh, one thing I've been working on is actually like creating some kind of marker for neighborhoods that do have a lot of mob in it, so that, you know, speaking to the community awareness component of the discussion is that then the neighbors all understand that they're in this hotspot, that this is happening, not to move wood, um, and to make sure, you know, we're, we're actually seeing in some of the neighborhoods that where it's spreading, there are tree contractors who have brought wood home and are cutting it up for firewood, and it's spreading within those communities. So, you know, the first step, in February, we presented sort of an action plan, which was, um, to get the word out, uh, train the contractors, work with the community members to get them to report it. If people go to our website at clerk.org, there's a whole page on Mediterranean oak bore. There's more information there. They can look at the, the maps that we presented today. They can, um, they can actually report it. Again, trying to emphasize that we want that data collected. Um, again, trying to emphasize that we want that data collected locally so that we can leverage it for funding. And part of that action plan was to train the contractors. And then um, if once we have funding, we can contract with those local trained contractors to, uh, and send them to, to people's homes that can't afford to manage this situation. The, the reality is, is if people can't afford to manage those trees, they're gonna continue to stand there and it's just gonna continue to spread. Um, the last piece of that is actually um, figuring out what we're gonna do with the woody biomass so that we don't continue to spread it. And there's been a lot of discussions about uh, how to utilize our woody biomass locally. Um, the Risk Reduction Authority just had a great presentation yesterday about um, what the capacity is for the county to be able to have some innovation around that topic. And um, hopefully, if all of these pieces align, we'll be able to help slow the spread of this invasive pest and protect our oaks and in doing so, protect our ecology and our species. You know, like 10,000 species live in a valley oak. So um, it's gonna have a lot of ripple effects in the community economically, but also ecologically. And um, I'm just grateful to have the opportunity to speak on this subject so that we can increase our awareness uh, throughout the community and also use the data that we're collecting locally to get funding to support our disadvantaged community.
All right. Right? You have your pen up?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. There's nothing else? I appreciate this uh, this discussion and presentation. Um, definitely need to do more outreach and whatnot. We'll go ahead and work with you on that and uh, we will, we'll go from there. Thank you again.